Six forty-five. We'll call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the acceptance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. The next item is the discussion and vote on cable television grant for the school department. Rich Lang is, he coming tonight, is anyone coming for this?
I sent him an email. I didn't hear otherwise.
Do you want me to speak on it for a second? Or John can also. This is, uh, this is based on renewal of a service that we, that we got a year ago that actually puts content on our, um, two television channels so that it's not always flicking the same, uh, picture all the time. So it shows, um, different local news, the weather, um, any sort of things that we want to embed into it as well as trivia and all this other sort of stuff. So it's, it's really, um, a program for eight hundred and ninety, eighty-nine dollars that constantly streams content on our two television channels.
It also includes the community bulletin board so that if people have information relevant that I can post it. And it's been helpful, so that's like another aspect of that technology.
Thank you.
Motion?
Before a motion, just a matter of, has anyone else lost their cable the other day?
All I know is mine's flickering on and off. I gotta.
Mine is, mine today was, this morning was flickering all over the place.
I mean, the cable, that, I guess, all my cable stations, when I get these two big boxes in the mail, they're, adapters or something, so which I know nothing about.
But I think those are for, my understanding, if you have extra additional TVs, those boxes are supposed to go to it? It's not for the actual, but my problem is that the box that I'm, that I have is, is constantly flickering. It's driving me crazy.
Yeah, me too, the last four days.
There's not a, I get three, well, probably not for Scotty here.
Anything's.
How's everybody's yard doing this year?
Okay. Maybe I better check to see who the builders. Could have something to do with that.
Me and neighbors is spliced in.
Uh, we have a motion been made and seconded.
I, I'll make the motion. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to disperse funds from the cable television grant in the amount of eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars for the Latronics annual subscription, which provides news, et cetera, between programs on channel ten and twenty-two. The school department has requested this, uh, dispersment.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that is unanimous. The next item has been postponed until the next selectmen's meeting came, I believe.
Yes, uh, May twenty-third.
May twenty, thank you very much. Next, we have to set the hours for the polling for the special election on June nineteenth.
A move that the Board of Selectmen vote to set the polling hours from nine AM until two PM for the June nineteenth, two thousand and ten special town election.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that is unanimous. The next item, agenda right at number six. Vote ballot questions, special town election. This is a, uh, one of the, uh, one of the items of the special town meeting will need a, a ballot question at a townwide election.
And this is for the Wampatuck repair, cause that would be an override, a debt exclusion override?
Yep.
So should I read what this draft ballot is? So we know what we're talking about here?
And just one is a point of information, the wording for an override question is in the statute for proposition two and a half. So if you get questions about why there's no amount in it or whatever, in the statute itself is the exact wording you must use.
Okay.
And that was provided by town council.
So this ballot question would be, shall the town of Situate be allowed to exempt from the provisions of proposition two and one-half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bonds issued in order to design, repair, improve, and equip the Wampatuck Elementary School at two sixty-six Tilden Road, Situate, Massachusetts?
And pound council is?
And that's for approving tonight.
That's what will appear on the ballot.
Yep. Okay.
I'll make that as a move to approve that wording.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the wording, uh, given by town council. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Just one point of interest on that, that, Trish, that's a, a twenty-year note on that, correct?
Yes.
So after twenty years, when this notice paid off, and I think the estimate was about twelve dollars a person, or twelve dollars for a five-hundred-thousand-dollar home in Situate per year, then it goes away after twenty years when the, when it is paid for.
Let's read. Motion been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that is unanimous. Assignment of articles for the special town meeting. Said there were two articles. One is the acquisition of Pier Forty-four. And the second article is the, as we just discussed, the Wampatuck Elementary School Repair Project. We'll do two things here, we'll vote to, we'll do separately, we'll vote to support or not support Article one, and we'll do the same thing with Article two. And then we'll deal with the assignment of the article.
Did we, did we already vote to approve them? I think at a previous meeting.
On twenty-seventh.
So this is just the assignment?
Just the assignment.
Okay. Acquisition of Pier Forty-four. I'd like to.
Kim, I'm gonna abstain from that.
Tony and myself do that. As, as, as a team together. And we'll work out the details ourselves. Article two is the Wampatuck Elementary School Repair Project.
I'm happy to. If that's all right for the rest, I'll be happy to take that article.
Sure.
John, John, yeah, and he will take that.
If I could just remind the board and, and just say to Bill, uh, as you know, I'm not gonna be able to attend that special town meeting because I've got an immovable professional obligation, that night out of state, so, uh, best of luck with this. Obviously, I support this completely, and, uh, I think this is a, a good way to go about it.
One, one other point, and Trish, I don't know if you're gonna talk about this later, are we gonna talk about, okay, then I'll, I'll just wait.
Whenever you.
Right now.
Chairman.
Thank you.
Is this on Pier Forty-four, uh, Pier Forty-four? All right. I'm just gonna step off while you discuss it, all right?
You have information in your packet relative to the information that the school committee would like to distribute for the informational meeting tomorrow at seven PM at the library, relative to the two warrant articles. So you have that in your packet relative to Wampatuck School and the debt exclusion. What I just passed out, and there's some additional information in your packet, is the proposed agenda and the handouts for that informational meeting tomorrow night. And by extension, depending on how that goes, whether we want to pass some of this out at town meeting next Tuesday, and we can regroup after that. Um, what, there's a number of documents that we've put together to inform folks about the town meeting that's coming up, and in fact, is why the board scheduled the informational meeting. I think the board has been sensitive to the concerns that this is a very quickly happening town meeting, and we haven't had an opportunity maybe to get as much accurate and informative information out as we wanted to. What I put together is some factual information about the acquisition of Pier Forty-four, the assessed value, the settlement agreement, what the obligations of the town are relative to the conditions of that, the taxes paid, the MBTA mitigation fund, what's that, you, what is that intended purpose of that is, what it's been used so, for so far, and what the board has negotiated in, as far as its ability to acquire Pier Forty-four with those funds. That's all there and explained. There's a bullet description of the benefits of acquiring that property, also some of the challenges with the property, a timetable that sort of said, where were we four months ago, where are we now? And then some next steps and frequently asked questions. There's just a couple of things that you have in your handouts that, um, I want to reiterate. One is the property value card that shows the assessed value and gives a foot plan, plot plan, whatever, of the, um, the building that's on it. There's a memo from the building commissioner about what the permissible zoning uses are and what can and can't be done on that property. And most folks will probably be surprised to know that a private use of that property is much more limited than the public use or municipal use of the property. We did an extensive interior inspection of the facility today with the wiring inspector, the plumbing inspector, the, um, building commissioner, the deputy fire chief, a member of the conservation commission, who's also a builder who has done, uh, work on the premises. And we also met with the prior owner, um, of the restaurant to talk about the improvements he made just before he vacated. There's a memo on that. There's also, um, information in here about, um, additional uses of the property, explaining the water rights that we would have if we purchased the property, an analysis of the MBTA mitigation agreement and what we've spent on it so far, and a summary of the conditions there. So, um, I'd like you to review those and, and hopefully get your ass sent in the next day, you know, next twelve to twenty-four hours so we can copy those and have those available to folks, and then open it up to questions and answers. There's been a lot of involvement the last week, um, with town officials, department heads, to try to find out as much about the property as we can. I was very delighted to know today while I was there that the building is in very good shape. And, um, I think, you know, tomorrow night will be an opportunity to tell folks about these two warrant articles, so we have an informed town meeting.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you and Ken Callow, the pop and everything. Where we had the past few weeks in putting this all together, we all understand that it was a, uh, a lot of work to it to make sure it was done right. And there's a lot of misinformation around, as there always is, on, on, uh, town meeting articles, quite often anyway. And I hope that, I'm sure that this, this sheet will, will address most of those questions, so thank you.
And I just, and, you know, I know there's been concerns that, you know, there's still not a lot of information out there, but I want to make sure that what we hand out tomorrow night is correct.
Yep.
And that's, it required several different eyes to look at it, and, you know, we've been still negotiating the final terms of the agreement with the MBTA, and want to make sure it gives us as much flexibility as we wanted for the town to be able to do what they want. But that being said, there are strict restrictions on that property. We're not going from having it restricted to open space to anything we want. It's open space to continued public access for recreational and educational uses. So it's not free and clear.
Thank you. Rick Murray?
If I could just add to that, the one thing is she, we've also met with Mark Patterson, the harbor master, throughout this whole discussion, and, um, I gave a little summary to the Waterways Commission last week, and in our packet, there's a letter from John Murphy, Chair of the Waterways Commission endorsing this acquisition, because the Waterways Commission is very interested in this, not only for water use potential, but also regardless of how it's used, public access to the waterfront. You know, whatever model we end up with, public access is gonna be a requirement and will be really enhanced, and the Waterways Commission is very interested in that. So there's a, there's a, a letter in our packet about that as well.
I'd thank them for that, if you would.
Will do.
If there's no further discussion on Pier Forty-four, I see our friend Bill Johnson from the school, uh, committee is here. We, uh, voted two weeks ago to support the article, we've signed it tonight. Would you like to come up and just give us a?
Should I go get Mr. Danny?
Synopsis of what it is or not?
I need to go get John.
Yeah, get John, if you would, just, we understand that, you know, you've done a lot of work on it.
Yeah, I think we're reviewing more detail of, uh, you know, actually the scope of the work, but it's mostly, it's actually core renovations.
Yep.
To the Wampatuck School, uh, it's actually, there's two pieces of, of the SOI, which is the, the information that we submitted to the MSBA for our renovation and get improvements. So we've been approved by the MSBA, the Master School Building Authority, uh, to move ahead with the process. There's multiple stages of moving ahead, but the, the next step is actually to get the, the funding from the town commitment. And once that, we continue to move forward with, with the MSBA. But it's really renovations of the boiler system at the, the Wampatuck School System, the HVAC system, some tile work that has to be done there. So just core infrastructure for the Wampatuck School. We also have, like you said, a lot of stuff going on. We actually have requested reimbursement for the work that we did at Wampatuck, uh, a couple of years ago, so, uh, that, the legacy expense that we've actually included as part of this that we hope to be reimbursed, and the MSBA has been open to reviewing that one-point-three-million dollars of expenses that we already, we already put into the building. We put all new doors in the building, all the windows in the building, insulation in the building, two years ago, two summers ago, or three summers ago? I'm having three summers ago. So that's actually part of our MSBA request. We've already spent that money, and we, and then we do, we're expecting to be reimbursed for that, too.
Tomorrow night, you'll be at the meeting, at the pre-town meeting or something?
Yeah, right, we have, I can bring in, well, at that meeting, I'll have actually an overview of the, uh, actual work that.
That'd be perfect.
Uh, the, the town, you know, again, it gets back, is it the school or the town? You know, the school really is just facilitating the administrative side of getting the funding. Actually, then, the handoff is really to Dave Dunne and his team that on the town, uh, was it Town Building Committee? Public Billings. The Town Public Building Committee. So really, so we have our MSBA committee, but we're really just trying to move ahead, the administrative funding, dotting the i's and making sure the MSBA has everything to move forward. Then we really hand it off to the people who are really experts at actually doing the renovation of the building. And that group has been fantastic to work with, they're really running with the ball, getting out, doing things in order, hopefully that we get the work done this summer.
So tomorrow night, any particular questions could be addressed if they come up.
Thank you.
Bill, is there a, is there a chance that we could do the work and not get reimbursed? Or, I mean, is it, is as solid as it could be right now with the reimbursement from?
Yeah, I don't, you know, I think we'll have, before we put any shovel in the ground, that we will have a commitment from the MSBA that we'll move down. So we've already been approved for the project.
Right.
You know, they're just looking at school, I mean, they have this whole formula that we gotta send school enrollment for the next, the last few years, they run it through this formula. Then we have two more site assessments coming, uh, to look at the school. So it's actually, you know, it's a, it's a tough process with many steps. And then we broke it down, it's like thirty-two steps or something like that to get to the end. But if you back think in the early two thousand, when these, some of these towns were building schools that were, you know, eighty and a hundred million dollars, the state finally said, stop, you know what? We're gonna approve the scope in the building before we fund any project and say, instead of saying, we're gonna fund forty-two percent of the, the building, they're gonna fund forty-two percent of the project. And then you have all these, like, internal project managers you have to hire to monitor the expenses and keep the state up to date, so you don't go over on your budget.
Thank you. John?
Can we get it done this summer, Bill? Is that, that is the intention?
Yeah, so they moved ahead with, uh, again, I'm not, I'm not a builder, so, uh, what, the bids and the work that needs to be done. So they've actually taken the ball and they're running with that and pulled together all the bids, so we're hoping to release those at any second.
I see.
And I think they've been getting feelers out there related to the work.
Who's, who's they?
Uh, it's the school, uh, the town, Public Billings.
Oh, okay, Public Billings Commission, I see. Okay, gotcha.
Some of the work needs to be done during the summer. It can go into, the boiler room can go into the school year, but by October fifteenth, they have to be up and running. We need a new boiler by October fifteenth. We will not make it through another winter with that boiler we, and, to be honest, it's just a waste of money. We're just pumping money into that, uh, each year to keep it up and running. Uh, so I mean, that's the biggest piece of the expense. But we, we do, we do, right now, we're, again, we're meeting with those guys, uh, Dave Dunne and, uh.
Sean Mulcur.
Sean Mulcur, right, they're both on the, on our committee, and, uh, and I don't forget the guy's name, but the new engineer in town.
Catherine.
Kevin Catherine.
And Joe and I are actually co-chairing the MSBA, uh, the school, uh, building committee. But really taking, at our last meeting, we really kinda took the handoff and said, you guys start with the project and get it moving, so when we get the funding, you can just run with it. So, I mean, real, we have to have the boilers done. So that's like, if you had to break the project up, that has to be done, and if we have to wait a little bit, we'll have to wait a little bit.
Well, I know it's been a ton of work for years now that you guys have been working on this, so, great job. I mean, the amount of savings are, if you get that, that legacy stuff thrown in, the reimbursement rate is, you were telling me, what, sixty-something percent?
Yeah, if you figure the, the way I look at it, the legacy costs, we've already, are already sunk. So we've already paid that money, so if you, we're getting reimbursed on that, too. It almost bumps the number up to sixty-seven cents on the dollar, on any of the new dollars that we do spend. So it's really forty-two percent on legacy and, and new project, but if we've already spent those money and there are sunk costs, and we weren't expecting reimbursement for them, it's sixty-seven cents on any new dollars that we spent.
That's great.
And I would too like to say, you know, and we always toot, toot the horns, but, uh, you know, Jim Kentwell really did help, uh, last summer and, uh, spring, I mean, last, in September, when we actually got approved, I think we were on the phone every week together, and he was making sure that, uh, our other two representatives, Bradley and Hedland, were up to date and making the phone calls, as, you know, a lot, a lot of politics going into this, and making sure you're, you're in line and you have your i's dotted and t's crossed when you get to that last meeting in September to get approved.
Thank you.
Great job.
Bill, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
See you tomorrow night.
Now, that's at the library at seven.
Library at seven.
For the twelve people watching.
The next item is reorganization.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, could I move to appoint John Danny as the new chairman?
Second.
Motion to appoint John Danny as chairman and seconded. Discussion?
Just a, a congratulations to Mr. Danny for running a great campaign, and congratulations on your win.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vignani, thank you. Appreciate that very much, gentlemen.
All in favor of Mr. Danny as the incoming chair? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye. Vote is unanimous?
Move to nominate Tony Vignani as clerk?
Second.
Vote again is unanimous?
Is there a pause or something?
Uh, well, there used to be a pause, but I'm, this is like it, I'm still chair, but it was, well, I'm.
You'll notice I got that in there as fast as I possibly could with all.
I have further discussion on the chairman.
John, congratulations.
I'd be honored.
John?
All in favor?
And I will, uh, step aside and.
Before you do, though, I think it's only in order, as you know, Joe, um, every time that we have reorganization, and as this, um, board has always reorganized and reconstituted itself, there's always been an opportunity to be able to say thank you to the former chair. In this case, Joseph P. Norton has served this town for the past year in a stellar manner. With his wisdom, with his guidance, he has efficiently taken, uh, the board through a year, a very, um, I don't wanna say problematic or traumatic, traumatic one, but certainly, given the situations that have come to the town the past, uh, year, he, he has steward it in such a manner that, um, I think every member of this board should be thankful. We have a new town administrator, I think she's been very, um, thankful for Joe's, um, guidance, Joe's input, his knowledge, his wisdom. And keep in mind that, you know, Joe's been here for ver, for a long time. He's committed himself, you know? I, I mean that sincerely, I don't mean it in any disrespectful manner. You know, twenty-seven years, Joe has, has donated his time to this town. Twenty-seven years, he has come to meetings. Twenty-seven years, he has come to, as liaison, to go to other meetings, sacrificing his personal time to his wife, to his children. He has donated his time privately to other things, and I only go right to Community Christmas, and I take a look at all the photographs of my kids sitting on Santa's lap as an example, baseball, other items, you know? This town should be very thankful to thank an individual who has committed himself or herself, in this case, Joe, for twenty-seven years. And I have to say, in addition to the recent election that I had, which I thank everybody for, Joe was re-elected, and he should have been, and I commend Joe for that. We have a gift, as we always do, and I wanna say that, um, it's been a pleasure for the chair, I look forward for another three years with Joe. Also, this may not be his last, but I think it's important, when I say last for chair, um, he has been chair for seven times, and that's remarkable. I don't believe, and I, I've, I didn't look up the history, but I think this is unprecedented. So the town should be thankful for the commitment, for the sacrifice he has done. I know I have been, I think that my fellow board members have, and as a result, we have given Joe, obviously, the proverbial card, as well as gift, and, um, the gift happens to be coming, it's gonna be coming soon, and some sweets to make it sweeter that he's no longer chair.
Thank you very, very much.
We thank Joe, and I have to say.
Appreciate. I thank you for, for these and the gifts, and I especially thank the board for, for their, uh, cooperation and commitment this year, because so often said, it, it's not a job that one person can do. And without the, uh, members of this board, without, uh, town administrator Tricia, Sheila and Kim, uh, particular note, none of this would come together, so. none of this would come together, so without belaboring this any longer, I thank you, I've enjoyed this past year. I am even looking forward more to this coming year, when not being chair. I think it's, uh, it's a, it's a very time-consuming job, as you can imagine, and sometimes exhausting, so, but, but it is fun, we enjoy it, we hope we did some good. So thank you all.
Thank you. Now, as, as acting chair, you sit, stay right there, I'm just gonna say, this is probably my shortest meeting as chair, so I'm thankful. I'll entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to adjourn the meeting at seven-twelve PM.
Is the second, any discussion? Very good. Thank you very much, folks.
I say done, Mr. Danny.
Have a good night, thank you.